...2014, and tonight is a work session. Please join us in rite for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Mrs. Healy, roll call, please.
Ms. Avanzato, Mr. Blasberg.
Here.
Chairman Cerisi.
Here.
Mrs. Clarkin.
Here.
Mr. Jones. Mrs. Held.
Here.
Deanna Mobley.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just a reminder before we go into calendars, for the community, if you'd like to speak tonight during Citizens Comments, which will be coming up very shortly, the sign-in sheet is right up here on the stage, so in order to speak during that time, now would be the time to sign up, and as I said, the sign-in sheet is right here up front, so you can help yourself to it. Mrs. Healy, calendars, please.
Wednesday, December 10, 2014, there'll be a Wellness Subcommittee meeting at 3:30 in the Administration Building. Monday, December 15, there will be a Joint School Committee Town Council FY16 Budget Meeting at the Beachwood Senior Center. Wednesday, December 24, and Thursday, December 25, Christmas Eve and Christmas Day, all schools and offices will be closed. Wednesday, December 24 through Friday, January 2, 2015, holiday recess, no school. School resumes on Monday, January 5, 2015. Tuesday, January 13, 2015, School Committee Work Session Meeting, 7:00 PM, North Kingstown High School.
Thank you, Mrs. Healy. This evening, we have two presentations. The first is the Dare to Dream presentation, and the CLAC Subcommittee will be putting on this presentation. And our second presentation will be the Full Day Kindergarten Feasibility Study Report by Dr. Roger, Dr. Humbert, and several others, I believe. I know Dr. Roger will recognize when we get to the presentation. So our first presentation this evening is Dare to Dream. If you're ready to go on the presentation?
Yes.
Okay. What we'll do is, as we said, it'll be about approximately 10 minutes or less on the presentation, and then we'll have an opportunity for questions and answers from any committee members in the administration. Thank you.
I'm sure we're turned on here.
So we have a revolving loop of pictures, just of the Dare to Dream Initiative. We didn't put together a PowerPoint, but just some pictures in case people want to look at. So thank you for having us here tonight. Kathy and I both work in the Office of Special Healthcare Needs at the Department of Health. I'm in the Adolescent Health Transition Program, and Kathy works in the Disability Health Program as well. And a lot of the work that we do, or the work that I do, is around adolescent health transition. And Dare to Dream Initiative is one of the big partnership initiatives that we have with other state agencies. Both Kathy and I come to our jobs through, A, being parents of kids with special needs, and also through the Rhode Island Parent Information Network. And so through a federal grant, Title V, we are contracted to the Department of Health as parent professional consumers to advise and work alongside and partner in a professional way. So that's how we got to the work that we are. We're also, again, like I said, parents of kids with special needs. So Dare to Dream is, oh, and did you want to?
You know, Deb, you covered it very well. As I said, we're not only parents with special, kids with special needs, but we also are longtime members of the Special Education Local Advisory Committee.
Right. So Dare to Dream is a student leadership initiative that came around, started as a partnership with the Rhode Island Department of Education back in 2008, 2009. And it's more than just an annual conference. A lot of people think of Dare to Dream as just an annual conference, but it's actually a youth leadership development, self-determination initiative. That, it started in 2009, but a lot of things take a long time to grow and really take hold. And the reason why we're here is because Dare to Dream is really starting to take hold and receiving national recognition, recognition, and statewide recognition. And we've also seen a lot of young people who have started at Dare to Dream back in 2009, who have each year moved from going there as attendees, to wanting to get involved, to taking leadership roles, to now, some of them are even speaking at a national level. So that just gives you an idea of it's not just a one-day event. But anyway, to highlight, though, the event, the Dare to Dream event, last year, we had over about 800 students from all over Rhode Island go to Dare to Dream, from Westerly to Boroughville, youth-serving organizations with youth groups. We had about 16 workshops that the kids go to, keynote speakers. We had a Ripto bus that shows kids how to use transportation, because we know with kids with disabilities and special needs, transportation is a huge thing for them to learn. We had people talking about travel training. So it's a very big event, and it's very inspiring. And some of these pictures coming up right now, they're showing the keynote speaker, North Kingstown, Marissa Eisner, I don't know if anybody's here from NK. She brought 23 kids from the middle school, and the pictures that are here, 23 kids from her middle school came, and at the end, they pretty much rushed the stage to talk to the keynote speaker and to talk to the youth leaders who are part of Dare to Dream team. And we're like, very, very inspired in that. And that's really what Dare to Dream is all about, to get them motivated and inspired to, because we know that transition, there's a lot of set services, right? Kathy, you can talk about that?
Absolutely. It is hard. Deb, we like to call her Ms. Dare to Dream, because she is so passionate.
Dare to Dream, Dare to Dream.
She's so passionate about this program, as well as she should be. It is an excellent, excellent program. The thing is, you can't talk about Dare to Dream without talking about transition. And in simple terms, transition is when you move from high school to the real world. And it's hard for anyone, but especially kids with special needs, to kind of make that journey into adulthood. And a lot of times, kids with special needs do not have the same opportunities, not for lack of trying, but just things just don't work out as easily for them. So this is a chance for the kids with special needs and their partners, and any child who wants to learn a little bit more, wants to be involved in leadership, to kind of take hold of this opportunity. As Deb said, we had close to 800 students there last year. We also had 26 school districts that were represented, very well represented. We had close to 100 volunteers from the Rhode Island Department of Education, Rhode Island Parent Information Network, we had Office of Rehabilitation Services there, pretty much any major state agency, they were represented as volunteers, so we're very proud of that as well. So with transition, how are you going to make an independent adult when you've received special services your whole life? Those services change. You go from eligibility to entitlement. And let me tell you, entitlement looks a whole lot different than what you get in school. So what can you do to build these independent skills in our youth? One of the ways that you can have a successful adult is when a young person is able to learn how to stand up for themselves and self-advocate, and decide what they want to do with their lives. Not what their parents want them to do, not what their teachers think they should do, but what they want to do with their lives. And that's what's so wonderful about Dare to Dream.
And Dare to Dream helps them find their voice in that. And the idea with Dare to Dream is that you start early. Transition is supposed to start, the Transition IEP is supposed to start at age 14. That means young people are supposed to be ready to participate in that IEP and drive their transition. Transition is a tricky word, because a lot of people think it means the transition to a, and it might be like at 18, 19. But really, transition needs to start early, and that could be within the medical field, transitioning to adult doctors, it could be in, if you're in DCYF or state care, a lot of times, transition means placement where you're going to live. It all depends on where you are, but transition as a whole is that process of moving yourself, young people learning to manage their lives and move forward, and be able to make choices for themselves, set goals for themselves. And that's what Dare to Dream is all about. It's about older youth talking to younger youth and helping younger youth understand all the great things that schools have, and what teachers are trying to do for them, and what those assessments are, and what ORS is doing, and why it's important to be prepared for all these things when the time comes. And it's for all kids, any kid with transition. You think about kids with special needs, it's a very, very broad scope of kids, so depending on, all kids can benefit from this. And what Dare to Dream does is it shows kids that they see themselves in other people, and other people succeeding and being successful. And so what we're here to ask NK is to be like some of the other schools that we've worked with that really have embraced Dare to Dream as more than just a conference, but it's actually a way that middle school kids can see what transition is all about through the eyes and the voices of their peers that are in the high school who are succeeding, and then those kids that are in the high school, and they can also see what other kids are doing across the state and nationwide. So what we're asking is that NK really take a look at what Dare to Dream has to offer, what RIDE is offering, what the Department of Health, or our technical assistance is offering. We've been having workshop support through the GAM Theater come and help schools work with youth. We have youth leadership opportunities, we have a youth advisory that is now nationally recognized. What else? Un-quarterly events that we have happening, how can we help get our, because when we were at Dare to Dream, the kids were like, we want to be there, we want to be involved in this. We want to, I mean, Rhode Island is a very small state, yet we're so bound to our districts, and there's so many opportunities for leadership for our kids, because they're not all going to be working in North Kingstown. They need to see the state as a whole, they need to see what opportunities at all. We have a whole bunch of materials here that we brought, and one of them is the Youth Workbook that was written, our office put this out in conjunction with youth and the Department of Ed, and I know that a lot of districts are using this, and it really helps young people connect to the tasks of transition, and Dare to Dream is in there. We have a Save the Date flyer, I have, and I want to give you guys time to ask some questions. We have a data brief that talks about that kids with disabilities and special healthcare needs are more apt to engage in risky behaviors, which is another reason why we're so interested in the positive, is really pushing positive risk-taking, actually, because it's a very brave act to get up and self-advocate. So we have a lot of the stuff, we have a, we're working with the GAM Theater, we have a Youth Speakers Presenter Bureau, where we're looking for youth leaders who really want to be keynote speakers, and help those kids to really beef up their presentation skills.
Yeah, one of the neat things about this Youth Speakers Bureau is that it came out of kind of this discussion we had after Dare to Dream. We bring in all these fantastic national speakers, but you know what? We want to bring up the Rhode Island youth to speak at this conference as the keynote, not just as kind of, you know, the workshop, but actually as the keynote presenters. So there's an application process, all this stuff is free, but they can get some excellent training in public speaking, as well as this cohort of other youth that they can work with, and it really is a nice bonding experience for the youth that do participate in any of our programs.
So we have the train, right, from Whittford Junction that goes right to, you know, the south of the Capitol Building, right? And then the Department of Health is right there, and we have a Youth Advisory Bureau that meets once a month at the Health Department. So it just seems like such a great opportunity for our kids to be supported, and how can we make that happen? How can we support our youth to be leaders, NK's youth to be leaders in their own lives and the lives of those coming up behind them? So I'm going to leave all this stuff here, would you guys, any?
Yeah.
Any questions?
At the conclusion of the presentation, Deb, you could leave any extra literature that you have for us with our clerk, and she'll make sure she disseminates it to the committee and to the administration. So at this time, I'll go to committee members for any questions or comments.
Thanks very much for that presentation, that was great.
Thank you.
I guess, a couple of questions I have is that you said last year, we had about 23 or so kids that attended the conference?
Yes.
But that you have all these additional programs that really help them in transitioning, you know, out of the school system. Are there specific things that you could recommend that, like, how do we get the word out to the students? Is it just that we're not attending as many of these things as we should, like other districts are? Or I'm just curious, are there certain things that you would recommend that we sort of promote within our schools?
Well, one of the things that we could do to help you do that is during the school day. It's hard to bring youth at night to come, and we have a huge amount of young people that we work with, but it's really hard to get them at night to come down and speak. But we definitely could put together some kids to come and, to a group of kids during, could I take this off? To inspire them. I mean, that's one way, you know, to have, because, and that's part of the whole Dare to Dream, is the peer-to-peer voice. There are also kids that went to Dare to Dream last year. I mean, some of the schools have Dare to Dream Clubs. We actually have a Dare to Dream Club kit that we've put together, which I forgot to bring. And so you could have a teacher or somebody who might be really interested in doing this and pulling together a Dare to Dream Youth Advisory, like, within your own school district, to maybe pluck some youth leaders. And when I say kids with special needs and disabilities, we're looking at, you could even have kids that might want to be teachers, special ed teachers, one day, kids who might want to go into physical therapy fields, kids who are leaders, who might have siblings. Dare to Dream isn't specifically, we get a lot of best buddies kids, we get a lot of college students.
Yeah. One thing that was really successful with Ms. Eisner is that she was really a cheerleader for this program. She took this idea, this was the largest group of middle schoolers that we had at Dare to Dream, and it was very, very successful. And it was successful because she really went above and beyond. She had meetings for the parents.
She brought parents in, we had a parent night, we had, I want to say, we had like 25 parents and kids come in together at the middle school.
She supported it with the, you know, the paraprofessionals went as well, it was very, you know, they knew the kids, they supported the kids, and they just didn't bring the kids with special needs. They brought a wide range of kids with them. So she's actually one of the examples that we use when we go out and speak to other schools about how can you involve your middle school students in this program, because we tend to get a lot of the older kids, and she's actually one of the examples that we use. This is how you do this successfully.
That's great to know. I think we're off to a good start, but there are better things that we can do to encourage more of the middle schoolers and not just the high schoolers, so thank you very much.
Excellent. And Dare to Dream is on May 20. It's at URI. It starts at 8:30 AM, and I would encourage you all to come and check it out, see what it's like. It's a day of seeing what young people can do.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us, and I will leave a nice pile of goodies right here.
Any other questions, comments, Mr. Jones?
Thank you. So I was very curious by your comments about transitioning to independence, and I think you see that at different levels. And so from an educational standpoint, I wish you could help me a little think about how this operationalizes a little more, because I hear you say things a lot like, during the school day and providing all these opportunities, which I think is wonderful, and then I also think that, okay, that, so that means these students aren't here, and they're not doing everything else that we've jammed into their schedule, the requirements they have to meet. So what are other schools doing to provide the flexibility for students to do that? And it sort of goes hand in hand, whenever you say what is RIDE offering, you know, sometimes I also get the feeling is what is RIDE telling us to do without giving us any resources to do those things? So is RIDE actually offering any support to these in terms of paying for transportation, providing waivers or flexibility to schools for certain things, providing, you know, what exactly is RIDE doing to facilitate this at the district level?
So we, actually, RIDE pays for interpreters, RIDE allows, they pay for, well, RIDE, as far as the Department of Education. They help us with getting the word out and working with the Department of Health, Office of Special Healthcare Needs through the grant, we're the ones who pay for the, we have a technical assistance grant for transition. So it's the partnership with state agencies that is offered with this. Most districts pay for their own transportation. Some districts use this as an opportunity for kids to get on the Ripto bus and get themselves down to URI, it's right on the bus line, so those are alternatives. What does RIDE, I mean, RIDE, we look at Dare to Dream as being, kids using Dare to Dream as part of their portfolio, part of their English language arts requirements, if they're going to do a workshop, public speaking presentation, this could be worked into some of their goal, their IEP goals. We've had kids who struggle with being in a group environment and who need those kinds of supports. So Dare to Dream, again, is not just a one-day event, it's part of their overall transition plan. Do you want to speak on that?
Yeah, and it is hard, because there's only so many hours in the day, and there's only so many teachers available, and that's why some schools have formed these Dare to Dream Clubs. So some of this stuff happens after school. And that's tough, because, you know, you need to have someone willing to work with the kids to do this, but that's one possibility. There's also a lot of sports, there's a lot of clubs through North Kingstown, that you guys have an excellent after-school recreation program. Maybe this could become part of that, that's one idea. But I do know that if a district is having trouble with transportation costs, there may be a way to work with that.
We have worked with Central Falls and with Providence to help them get buses, because they're struggling districts. I don't, you know, I'm not going to get into all the, I don't know what NK's deal is, but, I mean, NK is really close to URI. It could be a great opportunity for kids to jump on that Ripto bus, figure out how they can, and this is also an opportunity for parents to be involved. How do you involve parents in their kids' transitions? You know, this is a plus, this is a positive, this is something they can wrap their heads around. This might be something why we don't, why kids don't necessarily want their parents at Dare to Dream, there is no reason why, and we've had lots of parents go and be flies on the wall and go see the keynote presentations and see things. So this is also an opportunity to engage parents and get them to see young people who are succeeding and go in and say, oh, okay, that's what the school is trying to, that's why the school wants my son, my kid to be assessed at this, this is what ORS means, this is what a Transition IEP is all about, these are what goals are. So it's a big picture that takes, it takes time for things like this to grow and to realize why it's important. I don't know if that answered your question.
No, yeah, thank you, that was some interesting points.
Baby steps. And I think that's what's exciting about Dare to Dream, is that we started in 2009, and here we are in 2015, and a lot has come of what we're doing, like I said, you know, just.
Thank you. Mr. Blasberg?
I just want to thank you for a great presentation.
Thank you.
It's something, I'm new to the committee, so this is all new to me.
Welcome to Dare to Dream, that's my thing. We see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And just a suggestion, Susan Graham, teacher here at the high school, I know she's the coordinator for the best buddies club here at the high school, I'm not sure about the other schools, but she would be a good, I think, a good contact point to get a hold of and try to.
Yeah, Tolgate High School brings about 45 kids, best buddies, every year, two buses.
I know anywhere from a good 15 to 20, sometimes 25 kids are involved here at the high school, the best buddies I've seen, so it'd be nice to see that implemented or integrated into it as well, so.
Yep. Westerly High School brings their football team with their autism kids, I mean, so there's so many creative ideas that can happen with this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, our next presentation is the Full Day Kindergarten Feasibility Study Report. And I will, again, remind everyone that the sign-in sheet is up here on the stage, we'll be getting the Citizens Comments next, so if you wish to speak during Citizens Comments, please sign in. At this time, we'll be collecting it shortly.
Good evening, and good evening, everyone in the audience, sorry, we have our back to you this evening. This is, this presentation tonight is a report out to the committee, as was asked of us back in the summer, when we received some grant money from RIDE to start down this road. As you know, this is something that I.
Excuse me. Dr. Roger, I don't know if there's a volume control for that microphone, it's a little bit on the low side?
Check one, two, check. Better?
It's better, yeah.
Thank you. Learn how to use one of these things. Okay, so as you know, this was something that we started down the road in the summer, and we hired Ms. Joyce Ruppel. Ms. Ruppel is a former elementary administrator, and someone who has a lot of expertise in early childhood, and she is also part of a similar study in Lincoln School District, or feasibility for kindergarten. And I'm going to allow her right now to kind of walk us through a little bit of background on the committee and set things up. And Mr. Ed Ferrario from Stony Lane School is here tonight, Dr. Humbert and Mrs. King are here to talk about, you know, different aspects of the benefits and the challenges of including universal full-day kindergarten here in North Kingstown. As you know, we have full-day kindergarten that is grant-funded through Title I at Quiddnesset, but we do not have full-day kindergarten at the remaining four elementary schools.
Good evening, everyone, and members of the school committee. As Dr. Roger said, my name is Joyce Ruppel, long-term resident here in North Kingstown, and it's been my privilege over the past several months to work with a very fine team consisting of North Kingstown's school department members, all of the principals, and working with teachers in each one of the elementary schools, as well as other North Kingstown staff members, and parents, and community members. We started our work in August, and we selected four goals, which are listed for you, can we have the next slide, please? First goal was to conduct current and relevant research on full-day kindergarten programs, and then to prepare and analyze community surveys, perform needs assessment, and the capacity of the facilities of the elementary schools here in the district, and then to develop projected cost statement of direct and indirect costs for the full-day kindergarten program. And Mrs. King will be presenting that later on in the presentation. If we could have that next slide, thank you. It is the goal of the Rhode Island Department of Education to have all districts throughout the state have full-day kindergarten as of September 2016. So so far, out of the 32 total school districts, 25 have implemented full-day kindergarten, and only the following listed there, Coventry, Cranston, East Gren. and only the following listed there, Coventry, Cranston, East Greenwich, Johnston, and North Kingstown, which has full-day kindergarten at Quidneset only, and Tiverton, and then Warwick. Warwick was able to do some creative installation of full-day kindergarten in nine classes just this past year, about a week before school started, in seven of their elementary schools. So as you can see, that some of those districts are engaged in studying the feasibility for having full-day kindergarten in some of those other districts, and have a potential start date of when full-day kindergarten will take place. And now, Dr. Michelle Humbert is going to speak to you about some of the research and the benefits of full-day kindergarten.
Thank you, Joyce. The first slide indicates that full-day kindergarten increases student achievement. There are tremendous amount of studies that support the increase of student achievement, particularly in reading and mathematics, and so you'll see that the first one indicates that there's longitudinal data. One of these is a group of students who were studied from 1998, 1999 cohort, and followed through the years to see how successful they were. In the second bullet, it says that children in full-day kindergarten demonstrate better performance into grade one and into the primary grades. I just read about a study today that, from Maryland, that said that the gains were in years one and two, they found to see the greatest increase. Next bullet says that full-day kindergarten can produce long-term educational gains for low-income minority students, this being the fact that it closes the gap for those students, it levels the playing field. And then, full-day kindergarten benefits all students regardless of race and ethnicity, this was another study, and regardless of family income. And this was, the study that cited here was 8,000 students in over 500 public schools. And full-day kindergarten also results in happier, healthy children. And so we know that it's not just about academics, we are also concerned about the physical and motor development for kids, the social and emotional development, obviously their cognitive development, and their language literacy. So there's all those things to be considered, and there's only so many hours in the day. So you'll see here that full-day kindergarten offers social, emotional, intellectual benefits to kindergarteners, giving them more time to focus and reflect on activities and to transition between them. And what, there, a lot of the research is saying that what you'll find in full-day K is that there's less whole-group activities because they're not rushing to get everything done, they can have small-group activities. So the second bullet says that the research shows that five-year-olds are more than ready for a longer school day. This had been, I guess, one of the controversial aspects of it, that children were not ready, but we know that many students come from a full-day program before they even get to kindergarten age. So, and they do better in a setting that allows them time to learn and explore activities in depth, which we know leads to long-term learning. And the last bullet, studies show in particular that a longer day affords children more total minutes every day in self-directed, hands-on learning, which, once again, these are the activities that are associated with gains in long-term learning, because the students are able to participate in collaborative groups and do exploration and inquiry-based tasks, things like that, rather than direct whole-group instruction. And the next slide, the full-day K is cost-effective, and the rationale behind this, the first one is that teachers have more time to get to know kids and identify their learning challenges early, saving money and resources in the long run, and that, second bullet, that it lowers subsequent schooling costs by leveling the playing field, closing the achievement gap, and reducing the need for future retention and remediation. And this was one study, there were 17,000 kindergarteners studied, this was from Philadelphia, and they saw gains through grade three, and the academic benefits of the full-day program were found to offset nearly 19% of the total cost, actual cost, of the half-day kindergarten, over the half-day kindergarten. So because of the retention and the remediation that we find, I was going to, at this point, ask Mr. Ferrario to talk about that from his personal experiences from a qualitative point of view.
So I know over the past six years in studying and watching kindergarteners as they leave us from a half-day program to the full-day program, each year at the beginning of the school year, each school sits down at an RTI, a Response to Intervention Team meeting. We have those weekly on all students that are struggling academically or socially or emotionally, and we find that the children we pass on from kindergarten to first grade coming from a half-day program, we spend a good part of the school year with resources at the table, such as our school psychologists, our special education teachers, and other teachers that we need to have at the table, to look at these students and why they are struggling. And when we get through looking at ways that we could provide interventions for these students, it all comes down to two things. One is they didn't have enough time to develop, either socially, emotionally, or academically, and the amount of time they had in the days, we couldn't provide the interventions to them in a half-day program that you would provide in a full-day program. To provide any students with interventions at the table when you're teaching them skills that they are reluctant to learning, or they're not ready to learn them at that time, it takes at least three times per week, and you don't have that time in a half-day program, but in a full-day program, you will be able to deliver those skills to them more readily. And we end up, at the end of every school year that I've been principal in Stony Lane, and I know that my colleagues will give you the same information, we end up retaining two to three children each year in first grade because they were not prepared going into first grade coming from a half-day kindergarten program. So much money is spent trying to get the skills into the children that are not getting them in a half-day program, and we know that those resources can be used in a better fashion for our first graders, once they're coming from a full-day program, the kindergarten program.
Thank you, Mr. Ferrario. Now, regarding the long-term benefits, I know that this has been somewhat controversial as far as how long do these benefits last? You know, do we see, do we see results playing forward all the way to middle school, for example? And so the research honestly is mixed on the long-term benefits extending into primary and beyond of attending full-day kindergarten. So additional research is needed, and so we look forward to more long-term studies that extend into the middle years. But we do know that the results through the primary grades, the research is very solid in that area. And so the recommendations for policymakers is to strengthen the early academic settings in order to close the achievement gap. And Rhode Island has dedicated itself through Race to the Top to strengthen its early learning program, and so we have a grant now that has resulted in some strengthening of our developmental programs in, through the Program Quality Improvement Grant. And we saw the results of that through, recently, through the achievements at Fishing Cove, for the requirements, the criteria that was, that they were able to meet and get a good rating. So a lot of the things, the research too, is tied around how the quality of the program. So that makes it difficult when you're looking at the results, the results as far as how beneficial things are, because some of the programs in some of the states, they don't have requirements for, in certifications that govern the teacher prep programs as we have in Rhode Island. So you need to have a quality program in order for it to be effective. So that's another factor that's involved in this. I won't go through the, read the next slide, but you have a copy of the Rhode Island Accessibility Act at your places there, and it basically just supports what we have said about the academic gains, closing the achievement gaps, and also the fact that students are more likely to have exposure to things in mathematics, social studies, and science if they have a longer day, and that they would be ready for first grade. And then finally, regarding the research, is the relationship to the Common Core state standards. As you know, we, Rhode Island has adopted the Common Core state standards, we've been involved with that for over three years now, fully implemented in our schools, and we have developed units of study for curriculum based on these standards, and they start in kindergarten. And so oftentimes, the kindergarten teachers will say, are we expected to do the unit of study that are, we have a consortium that develops these of about 10 different districts, and many of them have full-day K. So our teachers are asking, are we expected to do these units in the amount of time that's suggested for each of these units when we only have a half-day program? And realistically, it's very difficult in the amount of time in a half-day program to be able to cover the units for ELA, which would be literacy and math. And if you do, it is to the sacrifice of some other activities that would go on. So finally, the Common Core begins with kindergarten, the standards are standard for everybody who has adopted the Common Core, but there are obvious structural differences in the programs across the nation. And so it's reiterated here that more concentration on the Core and less time for other important developmental needs would sometimes be the result, therefore sacrificing the exploration and the playtime that I talked about before. And the last bullet, programs must be made available to children to ensure that they have proper opportunities to meet these expectations.
Thank you, Dr. Humbert.
So this next slide features the results of the Foudas and Pennell reading levels from last June 2014, and it indicates how the half-day kindergarten students were doing, and this is combined with the four elementary schools that have half-day kindergarten. And you can see the percentage of being below target, and then the percentage of meeting target, and then exceeding the target. Again, this is combined of all the results of 148 students. And then this next slide will show you the results of Quidneset, full-day kindergarten, and the smaller percentage of below target, and those that are meeting the target, but it really jumps up to demonstrate those that are exceeding the target. We thought that this was a very important comparison for you to take a look at and see how those students in the full-day kindergarten, 54 of them, were exceeding the target set for the reading level at the end of kindergarten. Now, I'd like to tell you a little bit about the survey that we created as a team, and it was an online survey, and it was advertised on all the district listservs and local newspapers and with local community organizations, including libraries and the churches, childcare agencies as well. So 614 total respondents participated. As you can see, the parents with children younger than, or kindergarten age, with 37% of those, and the parents of children who have completed K, there were 35% of those, staff members, 22%, and the respondents with no school age, children with 6%. So 91% indicated support for full-day K. The survey had approximately 15 questions, it was very short, again, it was online, and we had it open for three months total. So 71% said that they are in favor of full-day kindergarten, even if their tax rate increased, with 13% not sure, and 14% saying no. Thought that that was also a significant piece of information for you to know. And full-day kindergarten will provide North Kingstown with a comprehensive and developmentally appropriate kindergarten curriculum that is linked to the Common Core. And 82% of the respondents agreed, or strongly agreed, with that question. So in addition to the survey, I also was able to meet individually with each one of the principals, as well as several groups of teachers in each of the schools. And here's some of the feedback, and this first one is from an elementary school principal. Full-day K offers respect for how a child learns. Current time constraints do not allow for the goals of the curriculum to be met in a developmentally appropriate way. And Dr. Humbert was speaking about the quality of a program, and that is one of the ways that we gauge if a program is of high quality, if they are really adhering to developmentally appropriate practices. The full-day kindergarten teachers at Quidneset said that they feel less rushed and can take advantage of many of the teachable moments that come, and it arises because they have the extra time. And most of the teachers said that they were very enthusiastic, and these were teachers who are currently teaching in our half-day programs, that they are enthusiastic about the idea of teaching in a full-day program. We also had several focus groups in the community, and if we could have the next slide for that. And here are several quotes, and I gathered a couple of other ones, too, that are not on the slide. One mother said, "My son went to half-day K, and he always struggled in school. I think he would have benefited from a full-day K program." And another parent said, "Full-day K would be a great addition to the North Kingstown School Department." So overall, the comments and the survey results really indicate a great interest and desire on the part of the community for having full-day K.
I'd like to switch gears a little bit and talk about the building capacity that we have for full-day kindergarten. In the last few years, we have had a little bit of a decrease in enrollment, and part of that, I think one of the biggest shifts in the district has been that room, more room is opened up at Hamilton Elementary than in any of the others. We currently, at the end of this year, moving to next year, would have roughly five rooms available at Hamilton Elementary to work with. And moving the Next Steps program from Hamilton Elementary would make a lot of sense, that currently has two rooms, we're thinking about making it a three-room item at Hamilton because there's the space to do it in three, just would add staff, would just spread people out a little bit more. But what that would do would provide space at Forest Park, which is probably the school that is the tightest for space right now. So doing that, and having the Clinical Day Program classrooms, one is at Hamilton and one is at Fishing Cove, moving to the Davisville Academy Building, we would have two classrooms available at Fishing Cove to handle what we're predicting to be 38 students, Forest Park would have two classrooms to handle 38 students, Hamilton would have two classrooms available, again, for 38. Quidneset already has three classrooms, and we're looking at roughly 57 students, and Stony Lane would have four classrooms available to handle 76 students. The total capacity that we would have for kindergarten, a lot can change, as you know, every year, different grade levels kind of go up and down in terms of, you know, the bumps in where the kids' enrollment lies. But we would certainly have the capacity to do that. We're currently at 211 kindergarten students, we would predict that would go up a bit because we understand that there are some parents who send their kids to other options for kindergarten because we do not have a full-day option. And that leads to the next slide. So to finish on this slide, we would not necessarily need any major facility upgrades, that's the point of that. We have a slide here, just to give you a little perspective, right now, North Kingstown resident students do attend full-day kindergarten, and currently, North Kingstown School Department pays $239,000 for those students to attend kindergarten. to attend kindergarten. They happen to attend at Kingston Hill Academy in the Compass School. And there are also about 15 students or so that attend local private schools for kindergarten. We would anticipate, although we don't know for sure, we would anticipate that some of those students would probably return to the North Kingstown School Department for full day K if it were offered. We know anecdotally of stories of parents who are taking up the charter school at the kindergarten level because of that full day K option. And it's not surprising that once their kids get involved in that school and realize, you know, this is not such a bad place and they would like to stay there. So there's a student that we do not have in our elementary schools for several years now. So hoping that this, this will be part of bringing those students back to the district and, and bringing some of that funding as well. I'm going to pass the microphone over to Mrs. King.
So the cost analysis that was provided to you, you should have three worksheets in front of you. The first worksheet is taking status quo and projecting FY16 costs. So basically, if we stayed exactly where we are with half day K at four elementary schools and full day K at Quinnesset, it shows that we're projecting we would spend $952,000 of general funds and about $113,000, $114,000 in Title I funds. That's just doing nothing. So I wanted to show that to you so that you could compare to see the increase over our current program. So that's the second page that you have. And the one, one big piece of money that we do have to account for is, we've spoken before, the Title I funds that are currently being used at Quinnesset Elementary School would have to come back into the general fund. We would have to pay for those out of the general fund. We would not be able to use those Title I funds for kindergarten at Quinnesset Elementary School because we would have full day K. It would no longer be supplemental in the district. So those funds would need to be used for something different. And Dr. O'Shea can talk about that. We wouldn't lose them, they just would not be able to be used for that. So what we're showing is that we would be spending, without doing anything, about a million dollars from general funds. But projecting out with the additional staffing that we would need for having full day K district wide would cost about a million six. And that's comprised of, we would need to add four teachers and four TAs. That, that's what these results show you. We have some additional startup costs that would be for cubbies and furniture and equipment and things that we need. Some additional supplies that would actually be something we would need every year. We would have some additional state aid at the beginning. But we would also save some money on transportation. And the reason why we would save money on transportation is because that midday run of taking kids home and bringing in the next class is eliminated. So we do save some money there. So the, the impact, the full day impact, the full impact of full day K for FY16 is about $643,000. So the third sheet that you have, as I projected out four, five years for you to show the incremental increase every year over where we are. The second year of full day K, we pick up a little bit more state aid. And of course, those numbers are estimated. I did work with RIDE on that. But again, that would all depend on enrollment as well. But we're looking at an additional about $175,000 in the second year of increased state aid because now those students are counted as full day instead of half day right now. So we get more aid on the state aid on those students. So that will help to pray the costs in the second year. And also in the second year, we don't need the furniture and the, you know, the equipment that we would need in the first year. We also have been told, Dr. O'Shea, would you like to communicate this?
We were, we were just informed today officially from Kristen Green at the Department of Education that if North Kingstown were to go to full day K, that there would be grant funding available to North Kingstown to a total of $76,000. I think I have 75 on your summary sheet, but that is now official. It was expected when I put together the presentation a week ago. But, and so that would help us to defray the costs for classroom furniture and supplies, help us get those classrooms set up appropriately. So that would be a big help. So overall, the, the year one budget impact, when you take into account what the costs are and what we could, you know, get from increased state aid and transportation savings, would come to about $557,000 across the district. So clearly, you know, I don't think anyone at this table, and I don't believe in my discussions with anyone on the school committee, that there is a feeling that, you know, this isn't a good thing to do educationally. And, but it is important to kind of, you know, go through the research steps and to really, you know, look at this closely because it is a good amount of funding that's involved. But the, the, the challenge for me right now and for you later on is to put together a budget that is still one that, you know, doesn't increase too much and finds room to make this happen. And that's, that's what I'm devoted to right now and working on for the next month or so before I present a budget proposal to the school committee. So at this time, if you would have any questions, we'd be happy to take questions.
Thank you, Dr. O'Shea. I'll defer to committee members for any questions or comments at this time.
One thing you started to mention, but I don't think you finished, was talking about the loss of the federal funding for Quinnesset, having lost the kindergarten program and what that'd be replaced with.
Yeah, as Mrs. King said, we can right now use $113,000 toward Quinnesset full day K because we don't have that in the rest of the district. Because we will have it in the rest of the district, we still get the $113,000, but we can't put it towards full day K. So what I would be looking to do with Dr. Bezulow's help is to still provide support services to title schools, particularly Quinnesset, Fishing Cove, Forest Park, Davisville, and use that money differently for different support services. What I have in mind at the moment, this may change in a lot of different ways, but I'm thinking in terms of social work staff, for instance. We could certainly use an increase district wide for that in fact, but particularly at, at those schools. Right now, Quinnesset will, has a halftime social worker. I would like to see that increased. I know Mrs. Danette would as well. And there are some other spots in the district where I think some improved supports would be helpful.
Anyone else?
No, I actually got a chance to sit in on the pre-presentation of this. So I got a, I got a bedroom with all my questions then for the most part. So I actually thank Mrs. Pell for her work and the other committee members because we had a good discussion, I think, at that, at that point. And one of the points I was emphasizing was, we, we have to look at this as, as an investment. Clearly, the short-term gains are pretty well documented. The tricky part with longitudinal studies is it takes six to eight years to figure out whether they gain anything. And by that time, your educational dynamics have shifted to begin with. And I'm hoping specifically in our district, with the investments we're making in technology and, and other innovations, that that's going to shift even more. And so I think it's important that we consider that the leverages and the advantages we want to see down the road need to start in kindergarten. And we know from our own socioeconomic demographics of our community that kids have different opportunities in their home lives. And I think it's going to be necessary at the kindergarten level to start leveling those things, especially with regard to technology and taking advantage of the down-the-road technology devices and techniques and other things we're going to do. So I, I look at this as an investment that's hopefully going to pay a lot of dividends down the road and also with the point that was brought up about RTI and other stuff. You know, that, that there's all these hidden things that, you know, hopefully will bear fruit down the road that we just don't know yet. But clearly, I think the studies and other things show that, that those are great potential for those to occur. So I agree, it's sort of a, you know, resourcing is always the, the long pole and the tent, so to speak. But, but I think this is a great investment for our community. And I'll add my final point because I talk about it a lot. I think it's important the community realizes that 19 number to Kingston Hill, we're close to 40% now of Kingston Hill. And, you know, I can go on and on about, you know, the educational things in our district. But clearly, I think that change is, is because we don't offer full day K. And so I, I think that whether we like it or not, the competition is sort of spurring us that we need to offer that, simply because we're losing at a minimum $250,000 a year. And again, like Dr. O'Shea said, who knows what the choices of some parents will be. But that four number at Compass doesn't reflect that 22 other families actually applied to go and only four got accepted. So I think clearly there's a demand out there for full day K. And whether it's 100,000, 200,000, who knows? But there's a, a sort of long-term stream of benefits that probably sums to a million dollars over the life of an elementary school student that we're just sending away when we offer what I think is, is better educational opportunities. So I think we have to take those into consideration as well.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Just a couple of quick comments from myself. You know, going all the way back to 2006, when I first came on this committee, I was advocating for full day K. Unfortunately, 2007 seen a large global recession. So the idea of adding things to a budget at that time was not feasible, you know. And needless to say, here we are in almost 2015 and we haven't gotten it done yet. And I really hope this is something as a committee, as an administration, and working hand in hand with the staff, the community and the town council, that we will get this done. It's something that I, I think we all support educationally. The reality is, is it, it always comes down to budgetary matter. I think some of the interesting data there was 71% of the community supporting full day K, or 71% of the respondents supporting full day K, even if it means a, a tax increase for them. I think the, we've heard publicly and privately from our local state legislators strongly advocating and supporting full day K. So that's something that I, I'd like to capitalize on. The, the points that Dr. O'Shea made and Mr. Jones made, we, the irony of that full day K is not mandated. However, if a North Kingstown student or resident decides to enroll in full day K at one of the charter schools, or we are required to pay the tuition. So one way or the other, we're going to pay. North Kingstown taxpayers are going to pay. I think that's the reality. I think that's what people need to realize. I'd much prefer to keep those students and those dollars in district in our public schools. And, and that amount of $250,000 a year, I think it only grows. I do agree with Dr. O'Shea that you'll see a tendency for those students, if they start off in those schools at the kindergarten level, pretty much they'll probably continue their education in, in that school as well. And we'll continue paying that tuition to that school. And if they have siblings coming behind, those siblings will go to those schools as well and we'll pay those tuitions as well. So, and lastly, you know, I think the administration and the school committee, every year, every summer, or every year when school's about to start up, will hear from parents, both here at meetings and both through emails, advocating for full day K and upset that the district does not offer full day K. And I, I share those concerns. But I, I will say this in all honesty, by that time, the horse is already out of the bond. What we offer as a district for educational programs and services is basically predicated on a budget which we're going to be starting next week. And that'll wrap up sometime March, April. And, and what we put forward at the start of the next school year is based on that budget. It all evident ties into that budget. So the time to be advocating at these meetings with the committee, with town council members, with everyone vested in the community is not. Is they're in this budget process over the next couple of months as we start to formulate this budget. Because again, what we have to offer at the start of next school year is, is all tied into that budget. So, but I just want to thank you for your time and your presentation.
One last thing I, I want to thank Mr. Pell for her work putting together the studies. She did a very good job, very comprehensive job for us. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. Next up is citizens' comments. I have two individuals who have signed up to speak at this time. Jennifer Baskins, I apologize if I... There's a, yeah, there's a microphone on the far side here. I'm, I'm sorry, is that... Thank you.
You said that we need to start advocating now at these meetings and for budgetary issues. Are there other meetings that we can go to coming up before January? Or is it the January meeting that we come to or that we have petitions? I just, how do you want us to...
There'll be, certainly you can advocate through email, phone calls. You can advocate at these, these meetings here. There'll be future meetings, January and February, that will be advertised publicly and on the school district's website, where this committee will be formulating and discussing a budget to approve and send over to the town council for the ultimate approval. So those are, those are the, the opportunities to kind of...
Would it help also to be petitioning the town council?
Yes. I think they're on budget time.
Well, there's a group of us that are working on doing that. So we're, we're trying to do that. I think my issue with not having full day kindergarten as a parent, I have a first grader at Stony Lane and a kindergarten in private school. My son struggles with not, not learning to the point where he would be identified for an IEP. I'm a speech therapist, so I make sure he's doing great. But he's also the shutdown kid, that if he doesn't get it right or doesn't know it, he's going to shut down. And I knew that half-day kindergarten was in no way in his best interest, that he would start out his day not wanting to go to school, having stomach aches. And I, that's in kindergarten. I, with Common Core, with them increasing the reading level this year, in the first grade, my daughter struggles, but you know, she's better at it than he would be. So I just, I'm paying for private day, we can afford that. I'm okay with full day. But it would just be nice to have it for families who can't afford to pay. And it's not about the money, it's about the kids. It's about not making them struggle from that point on. My child plays a recreational sport in North Kingstown with another little girl who does the half-day program. And she says, "Lachlan, there are toys, but we can't play with them." How sad is that? She's in kindergarten and she can't play with the toys in kindergarten. I just, I don't want my kid to drive school. There's other children who struggle in half-day K and then they end up qualifying for the summer program. So now we are paying as a town for summer programming for kids who are falling behind because their core curriculum and the increase in reading level, and they know they're going to struggle when they get to first grade. So now we're increasing that cost as well. So I just feel as a town, and it's North Kingstown, we moved here for the school system, that it's something we should offer. If my kids got into Kingston Hill, I would probably be there. So I know families that are there and, and you're right, they're there and they're probably going to be there for the long term now.
Thank you very much. Also, the notification for meetings will continue to be sent out on the listservs as, as they are now. So thank you very much.
Okay, Jill Johannan?
Good evening. I think it's great that this full day kindergarten is taking a step forward. It's a long time overdue. And I think it's good that you're looking at the, the increase in enrollment that you're going, going to get. When we looked at it years ago, it was generally about an 11% increase just in each class that went from kindergarten, if you followed that class to first grade, that we get like an 11, 11% increase just of kids that were, were not in district for kindergarten, presumably at full day K somewhere else. So at a starting point, you'd, at a minimum, you'd have probably, that's probably a good estimate of... estimate of the increase in enrollment. The other thing to consider is lunch capacity at the buildings, because now that these kids are going to be at full-day kindergarten, they're going to have to have lunch. And about, in some of the schools, the lunchrooms are already at capacity. So that's another little thing that should be considered as you're implementing this. And on another note, I see we have an IT director position that is on the consent agenda. And I just, I'm a huge proponent of IT in the schools. And back in 2008, when we eliminated the IT director and the tech educators, I stood up and urged the committee not to do that. So I think it's great that we have technology educators back on board. And if we're going to be filling this IT position, it's so important that we have educators involved in everything regarding the technology, because there's just so much more technology that's available in enhancing the kids. I do also believe that there's a great opportunity for consolidation of technology services between the school department and the town. And I know there were discussions in the past, and they never really came into, you know, it never really worked out. But with this new school committee and the new town council, which includes the former IT director of the town, who's very knowledgeable about IT, I hope that you do take that opportunity to readdress the possibility of consolidating some of the services. Certainly, the school department needs the educational aspect, and the town needs the public service aspect. But there, I think there are a lot of other areas of overlap that could be consolidated. So I hope you consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jill. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is the superintendent's report.
Thank you. One other proposal that I want to present tonight, actually before I go through this proposal, I'm going to ask Dr. Humbert to talk a little bit about some recognitions that we did not get to because we did the two presentations.
It is my pleasure to share good news with you that's happening around the district. The first is regarding all-state. And I see Mrs. Silvera sitting in front of me. There's tremendous accomplishments for the North Kingston High School, which had 48 students who were selected to perform in the all-state music ensembles this spring. This is a highly competitive audition that over 1,500 students participated in last Saturday. And we also have five students who were ranked number one in the state. So congratulations to Mrs. Silvera and her colleagues. We also had a robotics competition this past Saturday. It was very exciting. The team was made up of, I mean, the club is made up of three teams. Ian, in front of me is on one of the teams. All three qualified for the state tournament, which will be held on January 31st. And they got some special recognitions, special awards each of the teams this past Saturday. And then in the theater department, at the high school, we had the Northeast Educational Theater Festival, and our students swept away the competition, winning four of the individual events. So congratulations to them. And Sarah Andrews has made it as a finalist. She is one of 12 national finalists for the Wendy's Heisman Award. And she will find out this Friday night in New York City if she will be named as the national female winner. So we wish her the best in that. Then there's a great YouTube video out there, if you Google it, and I think you'll be able to find it.
It's actually on the webpage.
On our webpage.
The cover of the webpage, and it is organized by ESPN, so it's a very professionally-done product.
Thank you. Dr. O'Jay?
Okay. Tonight, for my superintendent's report, I actually have a proposal, and I'm looking for kind of a consensus vote from the school committee. One of the goals that the school committee has set for itself and for me this year is to start a long-term planning task force. And I have waited until the inception of the new school committee. This is our first meeting with some of the, you know, school department business. So want to get going right away on a long-term planning task force with the following charge. Within six months of its inception, this task force will produce a list of recommendations related to long-term planning for North Kingston School Department properties, buildings, staffing, and general resources. These recommendations will then be presented to the North Kingston School Committee and Town Council no later than June 30th, 2014. We will consider the age, condition, and capacities of district facilities and infrastructure, the long-term projections for student enrollment, town-wide neighborhood and school-by-school demographic data, how these factors affect short- and long-term staffing needs, and how these factors affect and influence long-term North Kingston department mission and vision. As you all know, our school department has, you know, variety, we have eight schools, and the Davisville Academy, and the central office. When you think of the variety of the ages and the building conditions that we have, there is a lot to maintain. And we have a capital improvement plan with budgetary items totaling over $20 million. And that's just in the near foreseeable future. It is important on a year-to-year basis to do our budgetary planning, but it is also important to be thinking, okay, 20 years from now, where do we want to be? What do we want as the average age for a school building in North Kingston 20 years from now? What would we project in terms of the number of kids we'll be servicing in North Kingston public schools at that point? It's that kind of planning that we need to be thinking about. And I would propose, although I'm not necessarily looking to have particular people as a part of this group, but that I would be a part of the group with Mrs. King, Mr. Cerisi as the head of the school committee would be a part of it, another member of the school committee would be determined, Mr. Grundy, the chair of our facility subcommittee would be a part of it, as well as another member of the facility subcommittee, Mr. Embry from the town, the town manager would be on the committee, Mr. Bergeron, the director of Buildings and Grounds in North Kingston, and two members, including the chair, Mr. McKay, from the town council would be on this committee. That would provide us with the right people in the right places to set up recommendations for the two bodies that would come through within the next six months. At that point, it would be then the job of each, you know, the school committee to make some type of a long-term proposal based on those recommendations if they see the need. So I think this is a really good first step, and I'm hoping for the school committee's support on this recommendation.
Thank you, Dr. O'Jay. As far as process, what I would suggest to my colleagues, with the consensus of the committee, this is a draft charge at this time. On our next meeting agenda, we can certainly place a final charge for this committee on our next agenda to be approved by this committee. In the meantime, in between now and that next meeting, when we will officially vote on a charge, with the consensus of the committee, Dr. O'Jay and I will reach out to the other individuals that he mentioned that would hopefully be part of this task force through correspondence, and communicate to them what our intent is, and hopefully reach out to them and start working on putting together the membership of this task force. And then, as I said, we can vote on an official charge at our next meeting. And the purpose of allowing Dr. O'Jay to start the process of making contact and correspondence and whatnot is, quite frankly, just not to waste any unneeded more time. So if there's no objections from committee members, we can certainly move ahead with at least reaching out to those individuals to start planning on putting this task force together. And we'll come back at our first meeting in January and approve the final draft of the charge for this subcommittee. So if any committee members would like to make any comments at this time or suggestions, the good opportunity. If not, like I said, we're certainly going to revisit this formally on our next agenda. So this is kind of FYI, and to kind of gain a consensus from the committee at this time as far as the direction we want to move in. Mr. Jones?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Cerisi. And I think it's fitting, the committee and our first sort of full meeting brings this up as an important issue. We can go round and round, and we have the responsibility, obviously, working with the administration on a lot of day-to-day stuff or short-term stuff that's just necessary work to be done. But ultimately, I think one of our responsibilities is stewardship of the district for those who follow us. And I do agree, we'd be remiss when we look at buildings with an average age of, you know, we'll have two middle schools in five years that'll have an average age of 70 years, and Mrs. King knows the right figures, but, you know, projected capital needs of anywhere from eight to 12 million dollars. And when you sit and think about what 12 million dollars could buy in terms of future capacity versus putting it into aging capacity, that's only going to require more and more. I think that it is appropriate that this committee, and reaching out, obviously, to the folks that were mentioned, and especially with the town council, you know, be part of a larger conversation too about what our community is going to look like. You know, it's clear with the town planner and the town council and their input in terms of what, you know, what our residential developments are going to look like, you know, what our commercial side is going to look like, and how our educational component fits into that. Clearly, as was mentioned here, our educational system is a big draw for families and residents that live here, clearly supports housing values, which is clearly important to people. And I think that we just have to put together something that puts in motion things that require three, four, five years. The longer we wait, the more costly it's going to be to us. So I thank Dr. O'Jay and the chair for getting this in motion, communicating. I think it's, the town council should wholeheartedly be part of this, and I would look forward to seeing what we can put forward to really advance our town in the long run. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Anyone else? As I said, this is going to be on our next agenda, so we can certainly, any questions or comments, we can get into more depth at that time. Moving on to routine items. Are there any, one correction on the consent agenda oversight on my part. Item E, approval of town council liaison, I should have noted, Mr. Robert Jones underneath that agenda item. That was one of our liaison positions that Mr. Jones had expressed an interest in. So with the approval of the consent agenda, we would actually be approving, also approving Mr. Jones as the liaison to the town council. So I just wanted to clarify that. And at this time, I'll ask if there are any exemptions from the consent agenda. Mrs. Clarkin?
I'd like to exempt item C4.
Any others?
B1 and D1.
Any others? At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the non-exempted consent agenda adjutant.
Motion to... Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries four, zero. So moving first to B1. Mr. Blasberg?
I wasn't present at that meeting as a member, so I'm going to just abstain from that vote.
So I'll take a motion to approve B1 at this time?
Second. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve B1. All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion carries...
I'll be abstaining.
Three, zero, and one abstain. Moving on to C4. Mrs. Clarkin?
Yes, this item came up previously, and we wanted to hold off on renewing our membership because we didn't know what the makeup of the board was going to be after the election. And if we had had a lot of new members, it would have made some sense to renew this Riasque dues, but, you know, it's to the tune of almost $8,000. And since the majority of us are existing members, and Mr. Blasberg has already attended the school committee 101 seminar that we have previously attended, I would recommend that we do not renew the Riasque membership for several reasons. Number one, I think that $8,000 could be spent on more important things that, you know, with the budget constraints we have, such as technology and security, that will really benefit the students. And I think with the experience that we have here on the board, and certainly Mr. Jones' connections with Bryant and Mr. Duffy, that if there are any issues that we need to become aware of, that hopefully they will be brought to our attention. So that being said, I would like to make a motion not to continue with our membership with Riasque.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second. Just to be clear, our motion, it's actually a negative, where if you're voting yes, you would be voting to not continue the relationship with Riasque. Voting no, you would be supporting continuing with the relationship with Riasque. Mr. Jones?
Thank you. I think it's an interesting discussion, you know, the larger issue about state and even national associations. I've always felt we were sort of put in a bind because to be members of Ryle, our principals have to be a member of Riasque. And of course, we're not going to not be members of Ryle, so by default, we are forced into paying Riasque dues. I will say two things. One is I'd say we're almost halfway into the fiscal year, and Riasque does more than simply school committee 101. They're effectively, part of what they do is legislative lobbying, keeping us informed of stuff. They are a data repository. As the liaison, I spoke with Mr. Duffy, that clearly I think that's an area Riasque can do, but clearly Riasque is also dependent on its members to give them timely data, which some members don't do so often, although North Kingston does a good job. So thank you, Mrs. King and others who do that. I would say since we're halfway into the fiscal year, it may be appropriate to bring Mr. Duffy down and explain more about what they do, and areas if we're not satisfied with what they do. But I think it may be a discussion for the FY16 budget, and sort of not to pull the plug on them at this point, considering they actually did invoice us many months ago, where maybe that discussion would have been a little more appropriate. So I don't necessarily disagree with Mrs. Clarkin's intent, I just think it's a discussion for the FY16 budget, and also give Riasque an opportunity maybe to come down and explain a little more of what they do do that perhaps we don't see, or to take input on what we expect, and what, that if we feel we don't get that, that maybe they won't get our renewal in FY16.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Just, Mrs. King would like to speak for a moment, I believe, to the billing.
Yeah. This happened last year. I don't know where Mr. Duffy is sending the invoices to, but they have never been received in the business office. And the way this actually came to me was he had contacted Dr. O'Jay, so that's the first thing. I don't know where Mr. Duffy is sending the invoices, but they're not making it to the business office. It's the second year in a row. Last year, you'll notice, it was a very, very late request as well, and again, it was because we didn't get that. But your point is well-taken. It is about five months into the year. If we prorated that, it could possibly be about $3,300, just for the committee to know that if you did drop this year, it's likely that Mr. Duffy would want to be paid at least for July through November.
Thank you, Mrs. King. Anyone else from the committee? Mr. Blasberg?
I did attend, as Mrs. Clarkin had mentioned, the school committee 101 seminar put on by Riasque. And it's my understanding, both from basically the invitation to that seminar and from talking to other folks, that our... to other folks, that our, if we are no longer a member of the board, that doesn't preclude us from attending seminars that they put on. We may have an additional cost as non-members, but I'm quite certain it won't be $8,000 more. And, you know, my concern with it is not at all, you know, against what they do. I've looked into, you know, what they do. I understand that they're a lobbying organization, a data repository and things like that, and operate on behalf of school committees across the state. But just from a cost-benefit analysis, I mean, it's a very high dues number. I mean, $7,913 per year. And based on what we get out of that, I just don't, I agree, I don't think it really makes a lot of sense.
Thank you, Mr. Blasberg. Just comment quickly on this. I did talk extensively on it when it was on our agenda last time. I didn't support continuing our relationship and paying dues at that time. I don't now. It's nothing against Mr. Duffy or the organization. I think simply put, like Greg mentioned, it's kind of getting the most bang for our buck. We were spending almost $8,000 in dues. I'd much rather take that money and spend it on district, in the district, on students and some of the things that we've been talking about here tonight. You know, it's, what I've seen for the $8,000 is some data, which in today, is today's day and age of technology, that data is pretty much obtainable anywhere, not spending $8,000 a year of taxpayers' money to garner that data. The workshops, which is mind-boggling to me, in addition to paying $8,000 a year in dues, we pay each individual member that goes to one of their workshops, who's already a member of the organization, has to pay an additional $70 fee to go to the workshop. So it's just, it's just, I'm sorry, it's just when we start having to prioritize where we spend our money, this just doesn't meet the bar for me. I, like I said, I'd just rather see us be, be more fruitful for us to spend that money on other items. So we have a motion to, I'm sorry, Mrs. Healy, could you read back that motion, please, by Mrs. Clarkin?
The motion to not continue with membership to Riasque.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Mrs. Clarkin, seconded by Mr. Blasberg. So if you're voting yes, you're voting to not continue the relationship with Riasque. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
No.
Opposed? No. Motion carries 3 to 1. Thank you. Moving on to D1. Mr. Blasberg?
Reason I exempted this is, you know, we're being asked to approve a director's contract for the new IT director. And just nothing against the individual that the contract would be with, or his qualifications or anything in that regard. I just have a fundamental problem with that. We didn't look outside the district to see what else is out there. And the individual who's been put forth, I have no doubt he's qualified, but I just feel that we have a responsibility, particularly for a position of this level, which is, you know, a director of an entire department, reporting only to the superintendent, to have the ability to look at what other candidates may be out there. And that's the reason I exempted the item.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Jones?
Yeah, make a motion to approve D1, please.
A motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Anyone else like to comment? Dr. Ojai?
Yeah, I respect Mr. Blasberg's position, and I understand it. I just want to mention to the committee and to the community that the reason that I am proposing that Mr. Booth be the IT director and have his contract in front of you is because he has done such an excellent job in the school department for a number of years now, and essentially doing very similar work to what IT directors do around the state. You know, I'm not sure to say that we don't know what else is out there because in this business, you know, going to different districts and, for instance, spending time at West Warwick, for instance, and, and having a background in the districts that Dr. Humbert and I, for instance, have been in before, Covington, North Kingstown, you get a sense of what is out there. And this, this contract has a probationary clause in that if we feel after a year or so that things are not going well, we can certainly expand the search out. But I do feel that Mr. Booth is in the position where he's had excellent ratings from us over the years, that he is in the right position to lead this effort right now.
Thank you, Dr. Ojai. Any other comments? Okay, we have a motion to approve for Mr. Jones, seconded by Mrs. Clarkin. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll vote aye.
Motion carries 4-0. That concludes the consent agenda. Moving on to unfinished business. CIP, existing bond, future bonds. Mrs. King, is there any updates or anything under that agenda item at this time?
Yes, I just wanted to update the committee. We had our asset management committee meeting on December 3rd at the Department of Public Works, and it was a great meeting. It was chaired now by a different chairperson, which is Mr. Will King. And a couple of the members from our facility subcommittee are on there. There were a lot of really good questions, some really good discussion. They spent, they really did spend a lot of time looking at the capital improvement document that we sent to them. It was a very, very positive meeting, I felt, as though they really would like to work with us going forward as a town. And then also a couple of other items. The next facility subcommittee meeting, I apologize, I didn't get to this to Amy, but is right now planned for December 29th at 3:00 PM in the administration building. And I've been told that Mr. Kerry McKay is going to be the town council person on that committee, replacing Mr. Richard Welch.
Thank you, Mrs. King. My memory serves me correct, we have a position on that subcommittee to fill as well?
We do. And Mrs. Healy is advertising. I think the advertisement will be in this week's paper. We will be replacing Mr. Mark Plimpton on that committee. He is no longer on the committee, so we are looking for a member to do that.
So we're advertising and looking for responses from the community at large?
Right.
For a community member to serve on that subcommittee, which will be appointed by this school committee.
Right. And we hope to have responses for you for the January 13th meeting so that you can appoint somebody and we can get moving forward with that new person as well.
Thank you, Mrs. King. And just wanted to back up a second. I apologize. I just wanted to recognize Mr. Booth and congratulate him on his new contract. I'd say welcome aboard, but you've been here longer than me, so congratulations, Rich. Moving on to new business, we have no business, no new business on tonight's agenda. Brings us to reports informational purposes. Any questions, comments from committee members at this time on any of those agenda topics? Okay.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Yeah. I'd like to make two comments. One is I appreciate the chair bringing reports in to allow some discussion as appropriate when, when we provide these reports that the superintendents are doing. The second, I note that one of the reports in there in the data package on the graduation rates, and I know that Dr. Humbert's, there's going to be more about that in the future, but I just wanted to point out to the committee that the high school school improvement team, this is an area, that's one of their focus areas. And so there's been a lot of discussion about it, and the team is working on, on the issue as part of a larger package of four issues they're working on. And I am heartened by one of the things about bringing to light sort of metrics and, and things on our cohorts earlier in the process. So we get out in front of, of understanding where our freshmen, sophomores are, so we can even, we have a 90-plus percent graduation rate now, which is, which is great, but, but trying to push that even more to ensure that all students leave the district with the best opportunity with their diploma. So thanks for adding that, Dr. Humbert, if that was you or whoever. And again, just to let the committee know that that should be a topic of future discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Well said. Any other comments, questions? Okay, at this time, I will entertain a motion to recess to executive session pursuant to RIGL 4246-4 for collective bargaining updates and litigation and legal advice updates.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 4-0. We are recessed into executive session.